Welcome, everyone. I'd like to open the February 5th, 2020, meeting of the Planning, Zoning, and Historic Commission of East Dundee. I'd like to call the meeting order. Do we have a roll call, Captain?
Garcoley.
Here.
Coleman. Eard Meyer.
Here.
Apke.
Here.
Stenick.
Here.
Bernstein.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Musket.
Here.
Brewer.
Here. We have a couple of things we need to clean up fast, early, before we get into our public hearing. So, I'd like to hear a motion to approve the meeting minutes from our June 6th, 2019 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Garcoley.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Apke.
Yes.
Sternick.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Musket.
Yes.
According to law, we also ask at this time that there's meetings or, I mean, minutes are approved. We ask for any public comment not relating to items that are on the agenda. Does anyone have any public comment on anything not on the agenda? Okay, good. The first item on our agenda is a historic commission item regarding a certificate of appropriateness for offense and building at, I'm sorry, I'm reading the old minutes. Regarding 325 Meyer Street. Could the applicant please come forward and present his request? Introduce yourself, please.
I'm Mr. Herrnberger for a time use.
Okay, you want to, you're requesting what?
It's a temporary structure outside that's pushed up against the outside border. Built in four foot panes sections, so it's a little bit quick. Taking apart the sections as well, but it's for the back, hopefully use again the next year. It's mainly for coverage for customers going outside the smoke. Previously, I had a tent out there the past two winters. Not very safe, dangerous, so sitting on top of the tent, compared to, this is more around solid and safe. So I also painted and tried to optimize the outside part along with the primary, because this temporary structure, it's tall by sixteen, four foot panes sections, sixteen sections.
So did you know you had to apply for historic appropriateness certificate to put that in there?
I did. I was thinking more it's a temporary that should just pop up, pop down.
Building official person in the complex?
Uh, just a little background, I believe it was constructed in around like December sometime, is that correct?
Yeah.
More Christmas.
Yeah.
It was constructed without a permit and then subsequently apply for a permit. December 20th on that application. And then I know Biden, that he needed to remove the structure because it was a problem. Need to get approval from the historic commission. And then he asked if he could come in front of his panel and plead his case to see if it would be allowed to stay out.
Thank you. You have any questions or comments?
I'd like to make a motion that we not approve the certificate of appropriateness and that the structure be ruled.
Give your second.
All right.
Okay.
Garcoley.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Apke.
Yes.
Sternick.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Musket.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes. Sorry, I mean, we have to have it removed. We have to go through the standard process to remove it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, our next item on the agenda, new business, is opening up a discussion on the location and zoning requirements that we are going to put on cannabis sales in the village of East Dundee. State of Illinois back in 2019 allowed for cannabis sales. Back in 2019, the village board voted that they want to sell cannabis in East Dundee. And at that time, since that time, there've been a few changes to the law. And so we are meeting tonight to not discuss if about cannabis sales, that was already determined by the village board. We are here to discuss where we want to sell cannabis. There are two issues. One is a growing facility, basically a farm for all intents and purposes, growing, processing, and transportation. And the other one will be a cannabis dispensary. So I'm going to ask Jennifer, our village administrator, if you can give us a little bit more background. There is a, already an ordinance that is written and underway for the sale of cannabis. And our recommendations that we hear from you tonight and that we continue to make could become part of that ordinance. Again, nothing here is binding. We are strictly recommending to the village board what we hear tonight and what we feel as a commission. So Jennifer.
Chairman of the Board.
Yes.
Do you want to make your statement in the public hearing or before?
I think we, I think we put it in before the public hearing.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Thank you, John. Can everyone hear me okay? Otherwise, okay. Thank you for coming. So the purpose of my report is to introduce the topic to you. I want to make sure that the public is clear on what our purpose and our scope is at the Planning and Zoning Commission level. As Chairman Brewer discussed, the board has discussed this item twice. And one of their approvals was to approve a cannabis tax of three percent allowing for the sale of cannabis within the village of East Dundee. And the village board made a recommendation to the plant commission on what regulations, zoning regulations that the plant commission could consist. Those recommendations have been incorporated into a draft ordinance that the Planning and Zoning Commission is considering tonight. The areas of topic include the zoning districts in which the cultivation centers, RAVs, growers, infusers, processors, and transportation organizations should be permitted. So these are traditionally manufacturing type uses that are indoors. Also, the zoning districts or overlay districts in which the dispensaries should, shall be permitted. The dispensaries are where the sale of cannabis occurs. We'll also be discussing whether these uses, any and all of these uses should be permitted outright within specific zoning districts or shall they be required to go through a special use permit? If they are required to go through a special use permit, we will be discussing whether there should be additional restrictions on that special use such as plants for disposal, ventilation, or security system. And finally, we'll be discussing the parking requirements for dispensaries as it relates to the downtown B1 district. At the board meeting, the last board meeting which occurred on December 9th, 2019, the board made the following recommendations which are included in the draft ordinance. First, I will cover the zoning regulations. For the cultivation centers and other manufacturing type uses, the board has recommended that the uses be restricted to the M1 and M2 manufacturing districts. They recommended against an overlay district, meaning that these uses could be within any property that is owned in M1, M2, within the village. The exception is that the state of Illinois law has a requirement that these uses be located 2,500 feet from an existing school or daycare or residential district. This is only for cultivation centers that manufacture medical cannabis. The village board has decided to apply the same regulation to cultivation centers that manufacture recreational cannabis because we feel that it's the same impact on the village and that these cultivation centers will be manufacturing for both recreational and medical purposes. There is an existing law, within state law, that says the cannabis uses must be 1,500 feet apart from one another. So that is a restriction that will be put on these type of uses. And the board has decided that the cultivation and other manufacturing type uses should be special uses as they may impact adjacent properties. And so we want to consider what type of impact these uses may have before we approve it. For the dispensaries, the locations within the village has expanded a bit beyond the manufacturing districts. The village board's recommendation includes that these be permitted within the B1, B2, and B3 business districts. So this is primarily all of the business districts within the village with the exception of B4, which is related to automotive type uses. They have recommended against an overlay district, so anywhere there's a B1, B2, B3, or M1 and M2 district within the village, these dispensary uses shall be permitted. There was a location restriction for medical dispensaries in the state law that was a thousand feet from the sensitive type uses that we discussed, school, daycare, residential district. When the state authorized the use of recreational cannabis, they eliminated that requirement, that thousand foot requirement. So there will be no requirement in this recommendation with regards to distance from those type of uses for dispensaries only. There still is a requirement under the state act that it be 1,500 feet from other cannabis Again, with dispensaries, the board's recommendation includes that all uses coming before the village require a special use permit with site plan, disposal, ventilation, and security system What this draft ordinance does not include is business regulations that the village board will also be considering. The board has decided to put additional restrictions on these type of uses but not put it within the zoning code. And the purpose is, this is an evolving industry and the village board wants flexibility to clean up the ordinance over time, add regulations, remove them as the industry evolves. So there are other types of uses, use requirements that will be within the village code and the village board will be considering those regulations once this recommendation leaves the Planning and Zoning Commission, goes to the board. The board will consider both the zoning and the business type regulations at the same time. So that, it's anticipated that will be in our next meeting, which we will be scheduling, but we did not schedule yet because we didn't know how large our audience would be. We'll probably be scheduling that in February in this location based on the audience that we see here tonight. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to Chairman Brewer unless there's any questions for me at this time.
Good. Okay, can I hear a motion to the, to the public hearing, please?
Oh, well, the motion, we open the public hearing.
I'll say.
Coleman.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, the rules for the public hearing, because we have a lot of people here, we'd like to hear everyone that wants to speak. When you want to speak, we need you to come up to the podium, introduce yourself by name and address, and try to limit your comments to what we just talked about. Where to allow cannabis growing and where to allow cannabis sales. Other points are not part of this hearing. They belong to the village board. This is strictly a zoning commission meeting. If there's a large group and they want to have a spokesperson represent them, we can do that. Maybe have a, somehow have that spokesperson, maybe take a number of people here who are part of that support group, and we can include that as, assuming the comments would be agreed upon. And after we hear redundant comments, we may reserve the right to ask if, you know, if everyone else is going to continue to make the same comments over and over again, we may take an action to ask for a show of hands or something like that as, you know, as we proceed with the, with the hearing. A lot of people here like to limit everybody, you know, the sheet said five minutes. We can limit it to three to five minutes. That would be wonderful. We need to, we need to get this going. So there is no specific order. I just ask that you remain some, some kind of decorum outside in our group and come up to the podium whenever you're ready. So whoever wants to go first, yes?
I'm sorry, before.
Yeah, well, this is, this is also not a discussion at this time. We, the commission will discuss your point of view after, after we complete the public hearing.
And because this is a, a public hearing now, it's not just public comment, we need to swear it, everyone who plans on giving testimony and speaking tonight. So ever, anyone that plans on speaking, if you could just raise your right hand, I will give the oath and then just respond in the affirmative. I swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate.
I do.
All right. Thank you. So everyone that plans to speak tonight is now sworn in. If you change your minds, hi, and you don't have to speak even if you took the oath, but I appreciate every good thing.
Okay, who would like to speak first? Please introduce yourself to us.
My name's Pastor Bill Yonker. I'm Senior Pastor at Emmanuel Lutheran Church in East Dundee. 310 East Main Street, East Dundee, and I'm a resident at 640 Tardis Drive in West Dundee. In 1994, I received a call to come be Senior Pastor at Emmanuel Lutheran Church. There was an understanding if I took that call, the church building itself would be enhanced. At that time, if you stood outside on the sidewalk, you literally would get concrete dust from your, from the, from the walls in your hair, they could be tuck pointed. There were spires that were falling apart inside. We had a retaining wall that was literally crumbling. It was a massive, terrible, we were so close to downtown East Dundee that the, it was an understanding that we would quickly move to fix that building. A number of the members of the church were seated on the village board, and so that was an understanding. Should I take that call, that it would not be unobserved to the community? So in 1999, we rehabbed the outside of the building, tuck pointed avenue, spires. In 2001, we started enhancement of building, not only to take down the retaining wall but to get on to 200% of the footprint of the church and also to shore up the school. I tell you that so I can tell you this. It was an understanding that Emmanuel would be a good neighbor in the village of East Dundee. I'm simply coming tonight to ask that the village of East Dundee would recognize that we have been a good neighbor, that our school is the only school within the city limits of East Dundee, and that indeed, having a school is a great benefit to any community as well as having a church. We're either, it, it all depends on if you look at the church over west or east of 25, if that's part of East Dundee proper. We may be the only church or there's only two of us. Having a church in your community is also important. I got to tell you, ladies and gentlemen, that should cannabis be sold near the school, especially in the downtown area, you can bet with all your heart that people will stop sending their children to the school. There's no question in my mind. We want to be good neighbors. We want to continue to encourage you as elected officials, but also we want to make sure that they do understand that we're not, we're not looking to impose morality on people. We simply want to be good neighbors and, and have other people be good neighbors to us as well. We are absolutely convinced that the sale of cannabis is going to happen, the state of Illinois is going to happen in our area. And so I understand Chairman Wink said, we are not looking to push water up the building and change that. We simply want to keep it from the confines, immediate confines of our school and our church. We want to be good neighbors. We would ask that you would consider that and also want to be good neighbors to us. And, and here's the, the precedent. Should our school fail, that does not benefit the village. It does not make people want to come. It does not make people want to reside here or do business here or eat or drink here. It simply will end up being one more thing that would cause the downfall to the village.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. My voice doesn't carry as well as pastors, but I think this is all right. My name is Sue Do Meyer. I'm the principal at Emmanuel Lutheran Church and School. I do not live in the village. I live in Carroll Street, Illinois, 25W 689 Arthur. And it's my honor to address this group tonight and to ask your help in continuing to keep the children and families of Emmanuel safe. For approximately 158 years, Emmanuel has served the families of this community. Some of you here this evening are graduates, some represent several families or generations of families that have attended Emmanuel. Some of you currently have children with us right now. Whatever your current status, one of the reasons your family chose Emmanuel was that our school is a safe place for your children to live and grow and learn. Emmanuel has long provided an excellent education in a safe and loving environment. I'm concerned that the addition of a retail store designed for the sale of cannabis near our school will challenge the safety of our children. Emmanuel houses several buildings on our campus. The lower level of the church houses our preschool, kindergarten, and extended care classrooms. The outdoor playground on the western part of our campus is designed specifically for these young learners. The children using this part of our facility are only three, four, and five years old. These children are outside every day. The eastern part of our campus holds classrooms for kindergarten through eighth grade, five to 14-year-olds. These children too spend time outside daily. Armed guards in a place within a cannabis facility so close to our school just isn't a good idea. The first 16 days of January, two armed robberies of retail cannabis store have been reported. We know this strong possibility exists should we choose to walk the road so close to our school. Think about this. The average distance a bullet can travel varies, but Google tells us that a military-grade 45 caliber bullet travels about 830 feet per second. Nine millimeters can travel about 1,300 feet per second. And 22s can travel up to a mile. This is simply too close for any place people gather. The chance that gunfire could erupt in the midst of our community so close to children playing innocently outside, just as they're supposed to be doing, is not an acceptable risk for our community to undertake. Schools have changed dramatically since I first started school, maybe for some of you too. I was a product of the 60s and the 70s. I raised my children while teaching in Lutheran schools in the 80s and the 90s. We've come from holding nuclear bomb drills to responding to the lesson taught to us by Queen of Angels disaster, which brought fire drills into play. Springtime tornadoes brought us tornado and severe weather drills. Columbine brought us lockdowns. Sandy Hook and other school violence events have increased all kinds, and active shooter and school safety preparations. Recently, the United States Secret Service has begun offering training to schools to identify and prevent school violence. Hundreds of educators, ourselves included, have taken part in the training. It's interesting to note that drug and alcohol abuse, and this is the, this is the training that we're given. It's interesting to note that drug and alcohol abuse takes second place after mental challenges or emotional challenges. That's both after levels. We know that cannabis alters mental state. That by definition is emotional, mental turmoil or disturbance. Add some alcohol or more cannabis to the mix, we have exacted the scenario the Secret Service and the United States government warns us about as we work to keep our schools safe for those most precious in our community, our children. No amount of tax revenue or income is worth the risk of endangering our children. So I urge you, please, do not pull the retail cannabis store so near to our school. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is John Tomlin. I, I too am a teacher at Emmanuel. My home address is 638 Rayburn, just up the road from East. I might throw rockets, Steve. What I'd like to say tonight is that you consider the letter that we have drafted for you, that we asked that you, what's this limit of 1,500 feet? I think that's, that's a good word in the spot. Now, you did say I wanted to make the idea of using cannabis. I won't. I don't think it should be anywhere. And if you could limit it, I would put it about 200 miles. But if it's going to be for the safety of the children that I teach, I want it as far away as you can make. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk.
People are very well organized in here. Nobody's trying to knock each other down at the podium.
Thank you so much. I'm Pastor Philip Bearwell, the Associate Pastor at Emmanuel Lutheran Church and School. My address is 613 Howard Court here in the village. Just a few weeks ago, my wife and I parked in Emmanuel's parking lot and we walked down to Baker Matter during the Dickens and Dundee celebration, and it was amazing to hear the sound of Emmanuel's band playing, providing music, to see the children of our day school showing off the joy of Christmas and the Christmas message. As we stood there in the corner of River and Main, take a look at things, we saw hundreds of people celebrating the best of Dundee. It was an awesome, exceptional night. There were people everywhere, walking up and down the streets, celebrating the joy of Christmas. As we made our way back to the village after kind of walking up and down the streets, we saw the hustle and bustle of people. It was overwhelming. It was a night filled with what makes East Dundee charming and delightful, a place where families gather for celebration and fun, a place where lots of people call home. I'm one of those people who call East Dundee home. Since January of 2007, this has been a place where I now will work, and bless the service of pastor at Emmanuel. Also, my residents have been here in this village for all these years. So I speak to you this evening sharing my hope that this board will recommend no cannabis sales be allowed within 1,500, 1,500 feet of any church or school here in the village. Specifically, that no sales be allowed within 1,500 feet of Emmanuel. For us, as you've heard, it's a matter of safety and security. Our children and families need to have a safe passage from their homes to our school. You can ensure that happens by not getting approval for the sale of marijuana close to our campus. To have armed guards present, to have parking issues, to have even more star traffic in the midst of our lovely downtown, this doesn't make sense for our community. For nearly 160 years, our church and school has been a steady presence within our community. We love being here in East Dundee. We love taking care of the citizens of this area. We love sharing Jesus with those near and far to our church and school campus. For the sake of so many children every day who come to Emmanuel, hundreds of children who run around on our playground, hundreds of children who are dropped off and picked up near our church and school doors, hundreds of families. Hundreds of families who drive through our neighborhood, neighborhood surrounding our campus. I'm asking you to recommend to the village that no sale of cannabis be allowed close to our church and school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Larry Heinz. I live at 100 Rock County, Dundee. I just have just a question. Is there a slow movement minimum for stores? Is there parking restrictions? Is there signage restrictions that are telling you that?
It's all addressed in the ordinance. State has certain restrictions. Village will have certain restrictions to that. I can't go through them, but I advise them all right now. It's not part of the script.
Would any of that fit within 1,500, any restrictions? Is there a place that would fit in those restrictions close enough to the church? All would be that I can't.
We'll see where it starts. Yeah, we can, we will try to answer that question after the public hearing. Okay? We'll ask our attorney to answer that question. Okay?
Hi, my name is Kaye Addy and I live at Fort Teneau Lane, Eastundy. And my husband and I, my husband was born here, grew up and was raised here. And then he lived in Kankakee for a while and then he wanted to take on a job here. And so 20 years ago, he brought me here to walk around, have a look at things. And we walked along the river and we walked along the bike path. And it was like, it was just like, okay. You know, I didn't like coming here at first and then after walking through the streets of Eastundy, I changed my mind. So we're here. And we moved into a house on railroad, 400 railroad, which is just two blocks from the bike path. And then we moved 10 years ago to 450 Bay Lane, two blocks from the bike path. So we love the bike path. When my son was growing up, one of us would put him in the red wagon and the other one would hang onto the dog and we would walk one direction on the bike path or the other direction on the bike path. And those were golden years. We loved that. We loved walking around Eastundy. So my plea is that you do not put anything in downtown that is either north of 72 or south of 72, whether it's a dispensary or whether it's a, a place where it's growth. That's what I'm concerned about is using that creative feeling of being in downtown.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Trey Johnson. I am, my, my address is 604 Main. My wife and I have been here since 1981. I'm also chairman of the board of elders in Emmanuel Lutheran Church and School. Emmanuel Lutheran has been a good citizen. And so, and the village has been good to Emmanuel. But there comes a time when the overarching interest, safety, children, is not to be considered. This is a new experience for a long time. We understand that it's, it's been legalized. But setting it too close to a, to a school of the very core of this community up to the age of eight, nine, and their families attend the church in the same complex, it, it places a genuine danger that needs to be recognized to our community. About two weeks ago, we had a new experience. I was in San Diego and the Senator, lawyer, the lawyer Roy Montag. And I met a fellow out there who was the former head of the marijuana interdiction group in California Department of Justice, both in San Diego County. And I told him, I said, we're, our boards are considering placing a marijuana dispensary could be near our school. And this fellow told me, he says, you know, huh? What do you mean? He says, I understand, um, cash businesses. But in my experience, that because, these are cash businesses, because federal banks are not blocking these businesses, there's a highlighting that when they are allowed, this gun battle stuff gets real bloody. And he told me based on his experience, a lot of places like the firearm, don't really care if you kill a child. You don't want anyone that goes shot or harmed or anything like that. We have a special obligation to protect these children, these families that attend the church. So we, we ask you, the board of elders and everyone else who's been here tonight, we ask you please to consider the safety aspect before it happens, not after it happens. We also ask that the board recommend a place for the nation, for the, you know, for the village not to allow any dispensaries or any other type of industry like this. We should at least have our, our students protect our students' children, just as a sideline. Both by law. My answer to the degree of Georgetown, Denver, and then what's the best one? So Emmanuel is pretty good for those kids. Thank you.
Anyone else? Someone coming up?
Good evening. My name is Erin Broer. Reside at 218 North Forestry in West Dundee. And I proudly say my daughter is a first grader, the early Emmanuel. Some of the comments you heard tonight is of course about safety. We have concerns about safety. But it's really about quality of life, isn't it? And about that quaintness that just drew us to East and West Dundee in the first place and what that image looks like. Cannabis, based, it's just not the right fit for our downtown area. We realize it has to go somewhere, there's going to be demand. We realize that. But the downtown is just not the right fit or the image we want to portray. What kind of other businesses are going to attract? What's the economic development picture look like in the future if we bring cannabis downtown? What, what are the other businesses that would be attracted to that? So we just want to think about that. And then we realize the tax revenue is super important. But East Dundee has survived for over 100 years without cannabis-based business. And I believe that we can survive another 100 without it in our downtown. So again, thank you for the time that you serve and making these hard decisions. We appreciate it. Please start listening tonight.
Good evening. My name's Brian Slovesek. I'm a member of Emmanuel Lutheran Church. I reside at 608 South Third Street in West Dundee, Illinois. Two quick points and maybe a number to save a little time. I encourage, I, I'm in support of keeping cannabis dispensaries and all other cannabis functions a minimum of 1,500 feet away from church and school, probably, public and private. And if it's okay with you, I might ask the group behind me to raise their hand if they're also in support of this, if you consider the magnitude and accept the whole issue. So Emmanuel, if you're in support of keeping cannabis 1,500 feet away from church and property, please raise a hand.
Or more.
Or more. The other point, I encourage you to keep cannabis, any form of use or growing or dispensary, whatever, a special use, no matter what the zoning district is. And I think you're kind of would encourage you to keep. If, if cannabis use is a zone as a, as a special use, any proposed cannabis facility that comes into East Dundee will have to go through a public process like this in a public meeting and we will get a chance to have a say in it. So if you're in support of keeping cannabis as a special use, please raise one hand. Thank you. Thank you so much for carrying our voice and considering our opinions. Thank you for taking it all.
We can just note for the record, because you know, the heads and all that, we can't have official representation, just that the majority of the room was in support of the comments of over 1,500 feet from the school and using it as a special use. There are numbers.
So bring what else?
Hi, my name is Katie Cooper and I live at 25 February Drive in Parkinnersville. I am a business owner in West Dundee. I am an owner and founder of Full Spectrum Services. I'm a board member of Illinois Women in Cannabis and I'm the president of the Illinois Health Industries Association. And I'm also a medical patient. So I've had quite a bit of experience on this topic. I was one of the first five people to sell medical cannabis to the state of Illinois, which means I know definitely how a dispensary works, how it operates, and exactly the risks that's involved with operating a dispensary. I'm in for a special use permit because as I have found in research that eliminating access to medical cannabis only does the opposite of what everybody is concerned about here tonight. We're concerned about being good neighbors and we're concerned about the children. Unfortunately, when you start to restrict access to medical cannabis, you start to drive sales to the black market. And what everybody needs to understand is all of the houses around that church and in that residential neighborhood have the ability to grow and process cannabis as medical patients in the state of Illinois. I'm afraid that if you restrict access in the downtown area, you will divert sales to the black market, which is exactly what we do not want to happen as a community here in East Dundee. We do not want to divert sales to the black market. Also, I'm hearing a lot of concerns about the children and, and you know, what it means for the children who live in the downtown area. But I would argue that downtown area is full of bars. Well, bars that I've been to personally and I've seen quite a large amount of violence and things involved with that. So I'm not sure what image we are really protecting in East Dundee. We know that alcohol is a huge trigger for a lot of the concerns that already are existing. We also know that about 60% of recreational purchases within a medical or within a recreational market are for medical use. And being a part of the community and a business owner who has given people medical cannabis bars and has helped people with resources within the community, I can tell you that we have parents and we have children that are using these products. What we are doing is we are dancing around responsible use and an opportunity for education. If we hide these things away, we don't talk about them and we don't handle them as a community, we're, we're really creating that stigma. We're creating that black market and we're creating a concern for our children. I think that if we allow it a responsible use and have the cops a special use permit, I think that that would be the best option. I would hate to see these diverted to the black market, especially knowing that there already is an access issue here in Illinois. Security may be a concern, but I can say from the state of Illinois' perspective, we have had two incidences within how many years of that medical cannabis sale? I think that's a pretty good track record considering the amount of other robberies that happen on a daily basis. So I would just like to say that I, I think a special use permit that would give the opportunity to really educate the community and put the East Dundee kind of on the map for responsible use within the state of Illinois. Thank you.
Katie, your support was to medical?
No, more recreational.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Kevin Ross. I live in 501 East Federal Avenue, Emmanuel, Illinois. My wife has lived here her whole life. We moved, I don't know, my grandmother or my mother-in-law right there, she's been here for years. Last weekend, we walked around, we had dinner at Aliano's. Then someone will walk up and down the street and smell the garlic. You smell the garlic, you want to go to Aliano's? What else you gonna smell at this dispensary downtown? We can talk about different ways to evade that scent and stuff. We were, we took a trip to Alaska early this summer. We saw a medical dispensary, hot dispensary. Down the road, there's cute little shops down there. We decided to not go to those shops. So I'm just an individual over there that loves to go downtown. How many other people are not a boy going to the restaurants and stuff because there's something that they don't want to be a part of? So that's all I'm saying, just downtown.
Good evening. I appreciate you giving up the opportunity to speak today. I'm Chris Webb. I'm the business manager at Emmanuel Lutheran Church and School. Basically, they don't let me teach and they certainly don't let me preach, but I handle all the financial stuff. One of the things that I have to commend the board, planning the zoning board and the board of trustees, is making downtown so much better than it was before. I grew up, I've been here, lived here all my life, because it's easier to grow up on the train tracks. I remember those train tracks. And I would actually walk back to Emmanuel every day. But I was a good boy. I got a quarter, got a very clean on the way home. So, that's where that came from. But in all seriousness, a couple of things that we've not talked about that I think we need to talk about. And one is, you created a nice downtown area and other businesses, like unfortunately lost my area, but other businesses down there are life businesses. You've got antique shops, you've got your, you've got your, you've got your vials, cool little antique store down there. You've got some bars and restaurants, some good, some not so good, but it continues to evolve well. Putting a shop such as that down there doesn't seem to fit that profile. Maybe I'm wrong, but that just doesn't seem to be a fit. It might fit better in a place, so first of all maximize your revenue, your tax revenue from those businesses, I feel like those types of businesses. And then develop something east of town, maybe the Walmart building, maybe an Illo Donovan Center Foods building, or it is far away from the downtown, easier to get to, people can get off, will be able to drive easily from Schaumburg or, or Elgin or someplace, come to town, buy the product, get the tax revenue, but not upset the apple part of this nice homie downtown area of mine. So I think that that's something we should, we should take a look at. We understand that the sale of cannabis is legal. While we may not agree with that so much, we understand that there are costs that are going to be held for the village, that they need revenue to help, cover the police and the, and such. So a couple of other things. There's an immediate increase in DUIs. That's happened in Colorado, it's happened in other states. I know we have problems with bars. That's water under the bridge. Don't add more water under the bridge. I mean, why take one more chance if one of our kids get hit by a drunk driver? Just not, not a good thing. We talked about the safety issues. We didn't talk about people that knowingly smoke long packs. Up until January 1st, it wasn't legal to possess, it was illegal to smoke cannabis unless for medical reasons. And obviously, I'm not here to talk about medical alcohol, I'm only talking about recreation. And, and, and so now we're willing to put people in our downtown that knowingly will to go to alcohol. Doesn't seem to make sense. And, and, and why would the village promote drug use? Remember we used to have beer programs or saying, don't do drugs, it's bad. And it's still bad. Parkings are probably know that. So that's five bad things. And I haven't heard one good thing come out tonight. I've not heard, I mean, I understand the medical end of it and, and certainly, my wife is a cancer survivor and someday she will have that again and that will be in need for her in downtown going and I get that. But the recreational use and consumption on premise of a dispensary needs to be 1,500 feet away from our school. Five bad things, no good things. Thank you.
My name is Bill Grant. I am a member of Emmanuel. I'm also a resident of Sleepy Hall. I hadn't intended to get up, I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I thought you needed another perspective on all this beyond safety, beyond other concerns. I'm a manager of five buildings in the city of Chicago. One of my buildings is at the corner of Fullerton and Mowah. And if, and if you know that area, it is literally right across from Mowah. And if, and if you know that area, it is literally right across from Moka Dispenser. Moka has been in the news for quite some time because of the large robbery that they had. And other than medical use, Moka was a pretty good neighbor of ours, there wasn't much going on. January 1st came around and things changed completely for the neighborhood, changed completely for the area down there. Parking became almost impossible. We had a large parking lot right across the street. I actually hired guards to watch that parking lot because people were parking in it and we did not have enough room for our old customers to come into our bank. We had very many elderly customers to come into the bank. You don't think you'd go to banks anymore. But anyway, and in one case, I was out there patrolling and one gentleman came out with his box of goodies on the wall there and I chastised him for parking in our parking lot. No joke, I asked him, "God bless you." God was, and peeled off into the street, nearly hitting a car, nearly hitting pedestrians going through. And that's not the first time that has occurred. It has occurred many times before. People double parked in front, tried to leave people off, and they sit there. It has become a nightmare for us as far as the volume that is parking there. So, and I believe that my, my feeling on this is the safety here is a big factor with not only the number of cars coming in, the downtown area, et cetera. I give you my personal view. It was a nightmare, it was difficult. I know you guys have a difficult decision to make and I commend you on trying to make a decision, but I would encourage you to not put somebody in a downtown area because we've also watched the businesses left the area because they couldn't put them. So, thank you very much. Thank you.
My name is John Chikowski of 307 East First Street. The ordinance for your marijuana locations, I think you should be placed into the industrial park. There's enough facility out there for people to park, possibly a built hotel, whatever may be suitable people that like to smoke and enjoy it. Downtown will be hidden at this point. No one knows anything about marijuana, what's going to happen, what's the rules, what's the regulations, what? All of them suggested location, 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 but it is industrial park. Thank you.
I live at 215 South Second Street in West Dundee, but I'm a lifelong resident of East Dundee. My parents still live on Bayonne Lane, right by Peter Pottery. I went to Emmanuel, my children go to Emmanuel, my grandparents, my great-grandparents all went to Emmanuel. The last thing I want is for my children's safety to be compromised more than it is. I can tell you there's not a day that goes by that I don't worry about something happening to them and I can't protect them. I wish I could. But why would we welcome more challenges and more issues to potentially plague their lives? They're six and eight, they have a long life ahead of them. And so to open the door to more violence, drugs, and crime would be very irresponsible and not in the best interest of this family community that we have created. I moved away from the area to go to college and my first place of employment in central Illinois. And I can tell you, the minute I started working down there, I couldn't wait to get back here. I moved back to Gilberts in 2006 and when my husband and I got married in 2011, we started looking for homes in the Dundee area. We looked for four years until we found our current home. And I can tell you that we have no intention of leaving because we love the family atmosphere. Opening and allowing recreational sale and distribution and production of marijuana so close to the school in a downtown area that is so family-friendly would be doing a disservice to everything we've created over these years. Thank you.
We certainly appreciate your comments. Can we hear a motion to close the public hearing, please?
So moved. So good. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you all. We've got to ask the village attorney to answer our question.
Of course. So I think you asked about signs. First, the, the state has restrictions in its act on advertising. There, you can't advertise within, per campus, within 1,000 feet of really anywhere that children might be present, so at schools, daycare, so those types of things. You aren't allowed to advertise any way that would appeal to children that has, you know, pictures of cannabis on it, anything that's misleading or makes any claims of health-relatedness or medical abuses or things like that. So those regulations are in the state's law. That would impact, you know, signs and advertising within anywhere in Illinois, including East Dundee. For signs, if you're within 1,000, if you locate a dispensary or something within 1,000 feet in the advertising restriction zone, you would only be able to, you know, have a sign with the name of the establishment for location purposes. You wouldn't be able to, you know, have any other type of advertising on your facility because you're in that restricted zone. Any municipality or could create their own sign regulations as well, they'd also be subject to any sign code restrictions that are already in place in East Dundee. Your, I believe your other question was about square footage. There is not requirement, a, a, you can place requirements for square footage for any type of facility that they would like. The state for dispensary doesn't have one. Was there a third question? I apologize.
Well, square footage for a building, parking, any parking restrictions, all that kind of stuff?
Parking restrictions? The state doesn't have parking regulations, but the proposed ordinance for East Dundee do have parking regulations in there. Jennifer, do you remember the specifics of those?
There is 150, one space for every 150 square foot gross area and what we've done is take our most restrictive parking restriction and apply that to the dispensary use. We've also, the draft ordinance excludes any exemptions within the downtown. And what I mean by that is, within the downtown right now, if a business comes in and it's in an existing location, we don't force them to add parking because the buildings are old and the parking lots are existing. The proposed ordinance does not include that exemption for dispensaries, so any dispensary coming in must meet the parking requirement. In addition, there's a 10-space minimum. So they must have at least 10 spaces that are dedicated for that business and they must be constructed, purchased, or at least whatever applies in order to satisfy the parking requirement. So that's within the proposed ordinance and that was an additional regulation that was put in the proposed ordinance after the village board considered this item because of the parking demand that was easily recognizable after January 1st. If you drove by a dispensary, I think you would see the parking demand that they created and so the proposed ordinance does have those parking restrictions.
Does any, is any business applying yet?
Nobody, nobody's applied because we don't have an application process. We don't have the locations. So following the recommendation by this commission to the village board, once the village board approves the ordinance, the establishment will be, then be able to apply for a special use permit and then they'll have to come before this commission again if, if the commission decides it's going to be a special use for a public hearing and then they'll be able to determine their location. So they had 180 days from January 2nd in order to find the location, anyone who was granted a conditional permit from the state. So we have gotten calls though. There are interested tenants and there are interested property owners right now. So we do have the interest, we just don't have the process for which they can apply.
Jennifer, let me check right, there seems to be 10 identified spots for this store.
Within, yes, as is in the proposed ordinance, yes. That, that is a decision that this commission will have to make. That's one of the recommendations, but that's how it is proposed.
Yes, in case there's no way to downtown.
So there is?
They would, they would have to, I mean, we do have areas where parking lots could be constructed, as you know, and they would have to construct parking in order to facilitate a downtown.
Does it also say though that they cannot utilize any other parking spots which are assigned to another business?
That is correct because parking restrictions talk about off-street parking, basically private parking. So when, when we enforce parking regulations, you can't come in and say, "I'm going to use these public spots that are right in front of my storefront to meet my parking requirement." You have to meet your parking requirement and your own. And so you can't do that with the public space and you certainly can't do that with parking that's, that's privately owned by another business. So you must fulfill the requirement by creating your own parking. And so the reason for the proposed regulation is because of the traffic pattern and the need that, that has been noted since these have opened. There is a parking demand. It is almost like a convenience store except you are in there for a longer period of time in order to get your product. So there is a parking demand, a real parking demand that's created by these uses. And without parking requirements, those spaces that are existing on the street are going to be utilized and there isn't going to be parking for the other businesses downtown.
That is item four in our discussion. Well, we can discuss that down there. So anybody, we don't really want to do a lot of questions. We thank you for your comment and we'll get off on our committee discussion here. Since we are talking about it and we've already started, let's skip the first three and let's talk about the parking requirements. We already made a start on that. If you want to refer to your information from the village, from the village administrator, the memorandum that is dated February 5th of 2020 today, on page three at the top, you will see the draft ordinance that is being proposed for the parking. We'll ask you to take a look at that if you haven't already. And have any questions or discussions regarding that? We've already started that discussion, so if you want to look into that. If we accept this, take it to consensus on how we feel about this parking, the proposed addition to the ordinance? Any comments?
Is there an average size of one of these locations? Is it 150 square feet?
No, I don't think there is any restriction or any legislation right now. It will be based on what an avenue you want. From my experience of looking at medical cannabis operations, they're really, they're really a pretty good size.
So that would require, but are these spaces there?
A minimum of 10, maybe more.
Should we raise, should we raise it or not?
You'd like to? Yeah, suggest it.
I suggest we raise it to 20.
We're running down the line. Down the street, we have it.
I agree with Lawrence.
In a place like the Old Dominique, do those parking places have to be guaranteed in particular?
This is only relating, if you read it, this is only relating to the V1 downtown business.
Oh, okay. All right.
850 per square foot would apply throughout the district. So the part with the downtown is only to remove the exemption within the downtown? So yes, and when we look at retail commercial centers like that, we would have, we do kind of have to factor in what the existing uses are, but we, you wouldn't necessarily have to go above and beyond and construct additional spaces because of the vacancies that are already within the commercial center. So in that case, we may be able to utilize parking that's not otherwise utilized. There is parking that's not utilized. You could also look at the vacant Walmart, for example. If, if something were to locate in the vacant Walmart, they wouldn't necessarily have to construct spaces there if a portion, a significant portion of the building was not utilized and the parking demand wasn't there based on the businesses that are already existing. So we have to look at that at a case-by-case basis, but I can tell you that there is a good chance that in those two locations, there would be sufficient parking.
I kind of like the idea of 20 spaces.
I'm not in favor of anywhere in the downtown business of the V1 district, so I guess I'm in favor of the 20 because I agree with you, I agree with you. I believe that we should put an overlay district where any use could go.
We'll get to that, we'll get to that. I was just trying to get rid of the parking question. How do we want, do we have to have a vote here or do we have to make a recommendation?
I think we, if we're going to take these item by item, if we can get a consensus, just for the moment, you're not bound to it, but if we have a consensus on the 20-space minimum and the downtown exemption being removed for dispensary uses, I think if we can have a consensus on that and then move to the other items. I, I'm hearing a consensus or you're hearing a consensus.
Do we have a consensus on that?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Let's address the, what really I think is the, one that we want to talk about is the second item on our little agenda here. Zoning districts or overlay districts in which dispensaries should be permitted. That's basically the gist of what we heard from our public hearing. And I'd like to open the discussion on that, like, and see what we have to say. Anybody that wants to start off, feel free.
Well, in the information we were given, there is a, there was a, and the way I took it was that the proposed regulations were coming from the board. So if, if some, if the board didn't want some of these things, to me, it shouldn't have been in our information. But the overlay district that was proposed to us would be every, anything east of Rob 25, not interrupting on Rob 25. And then... And then, we would need to regulate some type of distance away from an existing school, daycare center, church, and residential institution.
Johnson, would you like to address that? Because I think we're all in the same area.
Yes, I'd like to clarify that the commission was provided that the background material that was provided to the village board in making their recommendations. So, just to clarify, the village board has not proposed any overlay districts, although you are free to propose overlay districts.
Okay. Well, I mean, the memo given us says background, and then it goes...
That's December 19th.
Right, right.
Which is, which is the category advised, right? February 5th.
Right, the February 5th memo we just got today, we have not had time to review it, so. But, I mean, what we were given has background, has a page and a half of background, and then it says, "Proposed regulations, recreational and medical, bold print." So, the way I read this was that the proposed was what the board was proposing.
On December 19th. December 19th, again, and that's the result, and that's what other...
Then, I, I, I mean, I, me personally, I feel that this meeting should be closed or tabled until we have time to digest this. I think digesting this information, this much information on this topic in this meeting is ludicrous.
I agree.
I mean, that's like when they voted on the Obamacare thing, it was 1,200 pages long, and congressmen and senators had to make a decision in a day, three hours, and to me, it's ludicrous.
To clarify, the memorandum was distributed on Friday, and it was included in the agenda packet. There was a separate attachment of supplemental information as a point of reference, but the memo dated February 5th was distributed on Friday with the four discussion points. Then again, so, which articulates that the village board's recommendation was that there be no overlay district. And I summarized earlier for you the zoning districts in which the manufacturing type uses would be allowed and the dispensaries would be allowed. And I can clarify that again for you, but as proposed by the village board, there are no overlay districts proposed.
Well, if we continue, if we continue tonight, I mean, I would like the overlay district that was in the memo, that essentially would be east of, east of Route 25, not including fronting on 25, and pretty much limited to Route 72, the Rock Road Industrial Park, the Colombo property, the Fode property, and maybe some of the Prairie Lakes property. But that, that's what I personally would be in favor of.
You're talking for both?
For both.
Just better agree and cultivate the culture. Okay, that's your feeling?
That's my feeling.
I agree with that. I'd hate to see it be downtown. I just don't have a feeling it's blocked downtown.
I agree. It can't go downtown. There's no possible parking. It's too close to...
We've got too many community things going on, too many residents down there enjoying, participating. We don't want to all disrupt the, the wildlife and dispensaries.
Frank, are you really out there?
What's that? What's the rubber belt?
Dummies, you know, dummies.
Daycare. Was that Steve?
Yeah. My cabinet, if would there be a way to separate the medical from the recreational as far as location wise?
Yes.
In theory, from a practical standpoint, and what may happen, if they use it, it might include with the cultivation center, they may just define in all of the uses right now that are up on the lawn. So, in theory, yes. Practically, it may not come to fruition.
They do require separate state licenses, so it is, they are distinct types of establishments, so you can require different zoning and pursue it to state, to state law. You can't opt out of medical completely, so you have to allow medical with reasonable restrictions.
We already have that. Way a long time ago, I remember reading on the board, and as mentioned in here, August 1st of 2013, the village board reached a consensus to add pharmacies and drugstores to the number one zoning district for medical marijuana districts. So, we already have something in place on that. Maybe you can try it here. Okay. Comment, next cabinet down there?
Um, no, that's all right.
No comment?
No comment.
Paul? Steve? I had my say ready. Pardon?
I had my say ready.
I guess my feeling is I don't want to see it downtown. I think it'd be too much added, colofa to our downtown, which is already packed with people on the weekends all the time. We don't need more action down there. I would probably settle for the 1,500-foot radius, but if our board wants to recommend a overlay district, it would be east of Route 25. Are you going to comment that would be for both growing and all of that and for the dispensaries?
I think so.
We do have medical marijuana regulations in place currently, correct?
We reached a consensus, but we did not adopt the regulations, because we never had.
Okay.
So, we would be adopting those as well. Any further clarification on that? Okay, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this. Would the cultivation centers and other manufacturing type uses be restricted to the M1 and M2 zoning districts within the overlay? In addition, would the dispensary uses be restricted to the V1, V2, V3, M1, and M2 zoning districts within the overlay as proposed to the board on December 9th? The map that you're looking at?
That's what I understand.
What are you? Commissioner. My question is, is are the manufacturing uses limited to manufacturing? Are the dispensary uses allowable also in the business district?
No.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess currently today, there are no V1 and V2 districts within the, within the overlay district.
There are, the pink thing you see right there?
That would be three.
It is V3, yes.
Yeah, so, so, to me, I took it as it would be allowable in the V3, the M1, and the M2, but not V1 and V2.
Right.
But, I mean, in the future, the village could, if they redeveloped that, revolved the areas of that, they could create another smaller downtown district with V1 and V2.
No, you're, you're correct. You're correct. V3, M1, and M2.
So, that would take your, the dispensaries and the farm, for example.
What the, the manufacturing uses would be limited to manufacturing? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Can we go back to referencing the division of the recreational versus special? The state has a certain percentage of medical that each dispensary needs to keep aside. Is that regulation up for discussion with the board, or are we following the state regulation?
So, can you repeat the question?
Regarding the division and the separation of the medical versus recreational in certain dispensaries, the state currently has a percentage of medical use that has to be in each dispensary, and that has to be sold first, and the recreational is second.
And if that is requirement, I apologize, I'm not aware of that requirement. I know you can have a medical dispensary and a recreational dispensary co-located, as long as you have separate licenses for both medical and a recreational. And you can only purchase medical at a medical and recreational facility if you have a medical card, and then you don't have to pay the corresponding taxes that are out of the recreational cannabis. But, you can, and if you purchase at a, if you are a medical patient and you purchase a recreational product, you have to pay the corresponding taxes. But I don't, I don't know of a requirement that they have to sell a certain percentage of medical.
They have to have enough product out there to treat the medical for recreational.
Yes. But I, we cannot, if it's a state requirement, we cannot change the state's requirement.
State requirement, state requirement. And I guess there's one other point to talk about, and I believe the, the board has already kind of answered this question for us, and unless somebody has a big objection, this would be requiring that any applicant entity or whatever comes before this body again and before the board with a special use request for the growing or save for any cannabis activity. Do we have anybody that objects to that?
No.
So, I guess they're expeditionary.
So, I believe that we're hearing a consensus. I would, I will summarize the way in which the proposed ordinance will be changed, and then I would, the chairman should ask for a motion to adopt or recommend the ordinance as amended.
Sure, I have the attorney.
We're going to summarize and then we'll...
So, the recommendation from the village board would be to adopt the zoning regulations of the cannabis business establishments as presented in the village board package, but to change it to the parking regulations in section 157.150 to require 20 spaces and no exemption, well, I guess the downtown won't matter anymore, but no downtown exemption, and to restrict the cannabis business establishments to the overlay districts as proposed in the maps of the December, the December 9th board packet, which is to restrict dispensaries to the proposed overlay district, V3, M1, and M2 properties only east of Route 25, excluding properties fronting Route 25, and then the manufacturing uses, which is all the establishments other than dispensaries, would be the proposed overlay district, M1 and M2 properties only east of Route 25, excluding properties fronting Route 25, and to keep the requirement that all proposed cannabis business establishment uses are required to a key, especially this particular.
Is my motion, will we approve? Tell me.
One question. The, the distances that were in the memo, 2,500 for the cultivation and 1,000 for the dispensary, does it stay in?
The, within the proposed ordinance, the 2,500-foot requirement for cultivation centers would withstand, I have not yet heard any location requirements for dispensaries, so we would have to add that, although I'm not sure it would be applicable. There is a daycare in River Valley Square. There is a church in unincorporated Eastundy, next to Thorpe, possibly that could reach. Yeah, and there are residents, of course. So, if you want to put that restriction in place, you would have to add that now, because part of your recommendation is not within the...
Or it could just stay within the overlay district?
Yes.
Right now, the motion is with the restrictions on the locations, it's the overlay district. If you want to add a...
Do you have a copy of the 19, overlay district?
Yeah.
I think you just want to get the differences between that and, because we both, I don't have that.
Here's, 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 Route 25 would be further this way, I guess it's all through the road.
Same one?
Yeah.
What's the difference?
I don't believe...
I just, we have a motion, we should vote on it. I'm going to make a comment. I think this is, I hope this is an over restrictive reaction, and I believe since this is a recommendation to the village board, that the village board will override our recommendations, I position, because we made a reasonable request by placing this east of Route 25. I believe there is more reasonable...
You said it's more reasonable to where?
Keep it within the, within the business districts, but limited to, within, no sales within 1,500 feet of the intersection of Main Street and Van Buren.
No, we didn't want it downtown.
It's not downtown. You can't have it, it will be downtown.
Okay.
Sure you can.
Where?
From the corner of the church to the village hall, 21 market.
Not according to, not according to what they provide in this.
There's a map that was distributed, it's a 1,500-foot buffer. So, it's not, it's in the supplemental information? Village Hall, it's, yes, the village hall is just, is just within a quarter of the 1,500 feet.
We have to do it to the...
I guess the other, you could hook one of them in, Rosie O'Hair's, Rosie O'Hair's has shut down the bar, dispensary.
I don't believe that we have big colofa, I don't know the tax on this, I don't know how this is, I think it was a special use, it's a business, and you want to mention that.
I don't know, it was a residential use, I recall Tom McNamee coming and having the property rezoned, which is...
The zoning of Rosie, it has not been rezoned. No, it is, it should be rezoned in the future, and it may be, because they've acquired additional property, but it is zoned residential district right now. I mean, you could, you could create the distance requirement from the church, and you could also add a layer whereby it wouldn't be permitted in the V1 or the V2, and you could leave it in the V3. That's an option.
All right, what we were doing, we...
Well, right, but, but, since I said it's the overlay district... Well, right, but, but, uh, since I said in the overlay district, it can only be in that, unless, unless we amend it, so it can only be in here.
Was the motion on? Great. Whoever made the motion, like, would draw the motion, so we can have further discussion here?
No.
Did anyone second the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was second.
I'll pull it. Does anyone want to amend the motion?
I'll amend it.
It has to be who made the motion.
Okay, so he made the motion.
Howard.
You want to amend it?
What do we think, we have, I mean, nobody seems to understand anything here, and it's, you know, I mean, I'm, my concern that I expressed was the village board would just override all of our recommendations. So, will we have what we decided tonight anyhow?
If it's reasonable, there's a better chance that the village board would...
And I think the motion remains reasonable.
Okay.
Well, what, what other areas again would be acceptable to begin without a board or the, five, six, seven, five?
We have a motion, we need to vote.
Yeah, there, Chairman Brewer's made a suggestion, if others are in favor of the suggestion, we could vote on a motion, if the motion fails, we can make a new motion, so...
And just to clarify to everyone before you vote, the vote you're taking right now is to recommend to the village board the motion, which would include the increase to twenty target spaces, the overlay district as proposed in, um, December, and the, um, special use permits.
Clarify, just so everybody here understands, on this, this overlay count, is this one the common, the other common?
No, that's not, that's not the overlay.
That's the one, right.
The overlay is on the...
Okay, that's to cover that, yeah, okay. Okay, yeah.
This is what they're requiring.
Uh, can we call for a vote, Kevin?
Carfeli?
Yes.
Allen?
Good.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abkey?
Yes.
Stenick?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Musket?
Yes.
Brewer?
No. Okay, can I hear for a motion for, uh, anything else anybody wants to discuss?
I, I have a question on this dispensary license, is that dispensary license, I assume that means the number of licenses that are going to be issued or distributed within, within a certain area, does that include recreational as well as medical, maybe it's just a big, okay, with Cook County, and we've got forty-seven, forty-seven distributed chances to get one, you've got the public...
Right, there, there is a limit of forty-seven within the county region, but...
That's a seven county region, and it includes Cook County, it also includes County, and there's a, a county, towns that support our, our cannabis haven, a lot better.
I think it's important to note now that since the legalization in other states, the state of Oregon has now six hundred and fifty-nine licenses, the state of Colorado has five hundred and sixty-eight, so the number that is, the number that is allowed today will probably not be the number that is allowed in the...
Yes. I hear a motion, any other comments, I need to log you down.
We have our...
We have no other business? Your motion to adjourn?
Home neighbor, uh, being asked?
One thing before we all leave, I just want everyone to know, these are recommendations, the village administrator will notify when the next village board meeting is, and when they want to include in these recommendations.
We've got a... We've got a...
Yeah.
Their responsibility, their overriding, that's what I'm...